I've heard Mr. Green say that the industry now is trying to help the employees recover. It's always been like, when industry ends with the region has to close. Now, I think we talked about it, the first thing you do with them. If you're in an industry, you might try to find some investors or partners or something along that line. But as I recall, we had someone from Commerce at our retreat. And we asked that person, if you have an industry that's over a hundred employees, do you go to their rescue? And what I was told, pretty much, it's just an unfortunate situation. There was nothing that they could do. They didn't send any of taxpayer money to try to bail them out. And I think we used somebody, something to half a year ago and then after another company. Commerce didn't give any of the money, but it went through the general assembly and then decided to give the company five million. And eighteen months later, it's still out. But I know, like with Masonite, when Masonite went out, you all came to the rescue and put some things in place and started locking it up. And now we were at, like, just a minute, employees are not more. Sometimes you can't tell at all what's really going on on the inside. Anything positive on the front side of Rockland?
Mr. Governor, and I appreciate the question, and you heard the same things that I did at the retreat, and you're exactly right. The state is trying to bail out companies that got in these kinds of fixes in the past. And the problem was, a perfect example was the candid company up in Florence. They put in five million, and some other things they did for that company as well. And eighteen months later, they were closed again. We lost five million dollars as a state, plus whatever else was put in there. And the governor at the time, Jim Hodgins, said we'd never do that again. And that has been the policy, obviously, all along. What we have tried to do, in the cases of Masonite, thank goodness, we had a company already in the works that we were trying to place, that was in our basket. And we said, this company is going out of business, this plant's available, and timing was perfect. And I don't know if you read by there lately, Denmark, they're hiring now, they're also renovating an old lifetime door building. They're gonna put an operation in there as well. They will be at the Thursday meeting, the job fair Thursday, and hopefully they'll pick up a good many employees from that job fair. We go through this, we've been through it, and we all are from here, most of us, so we know what this area has been the past forty years. It's been agriculture, it's been textiles. We lived through the agricultural downturns, we lived, definitely lived through the textile downturns in all those companies. We lost, 2010, we lost seven companies, if you remember back, hardly remember back that far now, but we lost seven companies over a twenty-four month period in 2010. This is not a bad time. As Chair Lady pointed out a few minutes ago, the unemployment rates are tremendously historically low in our region. First time in history we've been in single digits this low than, and for all our counties. It was kinda, and it's kinda bad, if you think about it. Before Rockland, we were, and Ray Davidson's here, by the way, with Commerce, he goes around and tops all these companies on a routine basis, and the information that we can use to try to help. Every company in the region, all seven counties, are screaming for employees. And we have, and I'm not doing a lot of detail, but we were just kicked out of one that we thought we had won, and they came back to us and said, your workforce is not available for us to be able to fill the jobs that we need to fill. Now, that's, to me, is devastating news on our part, but it's also good news that most people are employed. Everybody that wants a job seems to be able to get a job in some amount. It may not be exactly what they want, but the opportunities are there. So this kinda relieves, and I'm not saying this is a good thing, obviously, but it does relieve a lot of people in the area that need jobs, are able to go offer up these opportunities to the folks that are sadly losing their jobs in Rockland. So in a way, it will absorb it. We certainly see that coming to fruition, but what it does mean, that every time a company goes through this phase, and I think I told you all that at the retreat, we had worked with Rockland now for almost three years, in various ways, in trying to help them do some things. Latest was last year, trying to find electricians. You remember the big sign they had out there, trying to hire an electrician, they couldn't find one in the area. But we were also trying to get them to, help them lower their costs with some of the challenges they had with buying raw product from China. China had driven the price up three times what it was supposed to be. We were trying to help them with the free trade zone, we had everything filled out, ready to go, and then the financial crunch hit. And that financial crunch, we could not afford to help in that situation for quite a while. The building's not going anywhere. The, and I've talked to the President on many occasions, I think you have too, the President is doing everything he can to put it back into operation someday, and it's not gonna happen overnight, we know that. But there is business out there, but with the types of financial need he has to have at this point, I think we're gonna be down for a while. You didn't have to take a break. Yes?
Somebody mentioned a company after that which won, their raw materials cost something like two hundred thousand a month, and something happened to China, they went up to a couple of millions, and they just couldn't afford that. So this trading embargo, you know, it could be.
What's that?
Um, it's hurting a lot of people, but it's all is, from their perspective, is in the long run, it's for the health of, of one of those businesses, shop shut.
I'm gonna tell you, and yes, sir, you're right, from the standpoint, there's a lot of emphasis on Bamberg County right now. From the state, as you know, we're doing certain things, and Chairman, you lead one of those charges in the public relations area, Beat Bamberg, et cetera, trying to get good marketing materials out. You know, y'all are savvy on the internet, a lot more than I am, with social media now. Go to social media, read about Allendale County, Bamberg County, Denmark, Barnwell County, see what people outside think of us. And I'll tell you what site consultants sitting in New York and sitting in Europe are looking and reading negative stuff. And a lot of it's true, being factual information about low incomes and that type of thing that you can gather on the internet, but that's the picture of us, and we gotta change that. And when a company comes over here, and Lord knows, I was riding through a county this morning, up Bamberg, and you run it through a road that goes into town, and tell me that you're happy and satisfied with the atmosphere and the look of some of our area? Dilapidated buildings, terrible roads, and that road is part of your problem, and not our whole problem, a lot more somewhere else. But we gotta change our image a little bit, too. To be competing with the world and everybody else in this country, especially trying to get European international operations here, it's tough, and we gotta have every foot forward. The thing that Dalton was talking about a while ago, that you had here on Friday, Thursday in Bamberg? Tuesday? Okay. Name was, uh, name's go by so quick. You had a site consulting company, one of the largest ones in the states, that Commerce contracted with come down, and basically, they're looking at everything we do in the seven counties that we have, and well, Duber's not in, six counties that we have. And they came to Bamberg, evaluated the industrial parks, industrial buildings, the infrastructure, your workforce, our technical school system, our educational system. They stood up here just like they were a company, and y'all presented, you had everybody in the world presented them, and tell them about what we have to offer at the retreat. I gotta tell you, the comments I got back, they were fantastically impressed. They had an image before they came down here, basically saying, what are we wasting our time in these counties for? When they left here to feedback, we got, we're as good as anybody. The problem is, again, we have shortcomings, and we gotta come back and get under their shortcomings and do something about it. So we're proud that we think we're on the move when the economy does pick up, and this is an election year, and you know how election years go. We think when the economy does pick back up, and people start spending money again, we're prepared and ready with the right type of policy. Real quick, from what I was understanding, Rockland's still making money, correct? I put the word out, I don't know if, but it was something else besides money, I mean, besides making money out there. I don't wanna put you on the spot on this thing, though. Let me tell you, basically, the scenario. Companies run with a line of credit, as many small businesses do. Those lines of credit, raw materials coming in, cover emergency equipment needs, as he had last year, and also may have gone to operational expenses, I don't know. But I do know that their line of credit went away. And when you're not able to use immediate financing to cover some of your expenses, you either can't buy them, or you can't pay for them, nobody's gonna sell them to you, so you have an immediate need to do some, take action, do something about it, and that's what happened. Now, have you heard from him, like, at one point, he did not return a call, he's been called a third time? We're talking continuously, we're still trying to find potential ways of doing things outside of Rockland. So it still could happen, I mean, the bar费s could, the whole money could get put out. It won't be this year.
It's a matter of time, David. You do whatever you can.
Yeah. Cause I heard Commerce just looked at them and went, try to speak to them, they ain't gonna turn that way out here.
And one more question.
Yes?
Um, what can you tell us about what's going on with Denmark? Lots or not lots?
Uh, Denmark projects?
Yeah, and the water system, how it affects, and then what needs done, the pit that has been fixed, and the project that needs fixed.
Contrary to what you read on social media, we, and I told you this in open session before, and I think you'll hear it in the end, we had and still have some interest from a very large project. That large project went away the day we came out with, I say we, the media came out with the story of water, and the contaminated water, the volatile water, the, all the questions that came out about how the water was not quality that it needed to be. That hurts. They immediately started looking somewhere else. We thought we were very close to signing a potential agreement on that. We had optioned the land, we put in incentives, we've done a lot of stuff behind the scenes to get the workforce prepared, and it fell apart. And we have struggled trying to get them back interested in it. As you know, we've put millions of dollars into the Denmark water system right now. The intention is basically replacing and upgrading, and if there is an issue, fix it, the issues that are in the system. DHEC puts out a pretty good report on a routine basis, we try to keep, there's a website, and we're trying to keep the information flowing that everybody can tell, especially companies can tell something as being done. They're into about two and a half million dollars, if I remember right now, just doing upgrades on the system and the water. The intention is to do whatever we need to do there, and also look at the sewer system down the river, too. Those were two of the issues that this particular company had interest in. And we certainly wanna make sure that the town, and the mayor, and the council are doing everything they can, and make known that they are working on this problem, and spending a good bit of money as we're going along here to get this thing up and going. But it's not there yet, so it's hard to convince a company, you're gonna have this volume, this capacity, when you're in the process of trying to build it. So to answer your question, we're still talking to that company, we're still investigating other life companies, we still have an option on the property, we still have a plan laid out that's to meet some of those needs. But we don't need more than negative publicity, it hurts us. And I guarantee you, social media's gonna be talking about me again tonight, probably you too, Terrence. But, and that's fine and good, I've been doing this thing for twenty-five years, I don't care how people talk about it, what I do care about is making sure we get these companies to come here when we need them, and we upgrade our communities where we need them. So the Beat Bamberg thing is great, we gotta live it, and then we gotta sell it, and we also gotta do some things like doing, cleaning up those dilapidated, burned down buildings, doing economic development, it's also community development, and we gotta do that. Real quick, did I, Commerce, that made it, I think I answered it right? Yeah, Ray raised with Commerce, but he's with existing industry for that. So if you ask, uh... No, so thank you for everybody else, cause Commerce has really been above and beyond trying to help us here in Bamberg County, and I'm really impressed with that. They have a really focused, and, and whether y'all have, Commerce knows a great deal. Raise your hand, Ray, take credit for it. Take credit for that, cause I tell you, they've gotten really good help here the last few months. So it's like the little development conference secretary talking about. Yeah, we appreciate that. And I, we had things, challenges, Rockland's another challenge, and that has gotten a little way up slowly. And we're doing everything, thing we can, and I know y'all are too, to work with Commerce to do what we need to do to get where they want us to. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dalton. Okay. Age, community impact report, date from the Bamberg County anchor of Commerce. Mr. Chairman?
Hope you've got your list of upcoming events, there's a number of them, I'm thinking about tables, if you have that list. Just turned out to be two pages back in time, so we've got some stuff coming, happening around the county, that I know are, that's why I'm sure I haven't told you all. But most of these on the first page are things that have been on here for a while. The Bamberg Job Fair, I have it ending in one, not noon, hopefully, if you go with one, between two and four, it'll be there. Apollo Music Club is having their fundraiser, and they give students scholarships, a couple of that. The Chicken Bog coming up at the Govan area, helping with the medicine issues. Denmark's gonna have to clean up today, on March the twenty-first. The Chamber and Keep Bamberg County Beautiful, having all the landings cleaned up, getting ready for our guests to come in for the river trips. So if you're not working on Tuesday, March the twenty-fourth, we just have a quail landing at nine a.m., and we'll go to every one of them, including Tiven, Bamberg County, cause we use those, and we want, again, you don't, you don't even buy somebody a house when you got trash all before you pick it up, so we wanna pick up the trash and make our landings look very appealing. And then on the next page, the Bamberg Spring Market, wasn't on here before, they're having that on April fourth. Lot of stuff going on on April the fourth, the Dawgwood Festival, the Air Market, and Bamberg Paddle Trip, and Spoken Water. I wanted to, I know a lot of people don't paddle, and that sometimes can be a good thing, if you're not comfortable in the water, probably definitely not in the bay. But Spoken Water is not just for paddlers, you can drive to it, you don't have to paddle to it. And I, on Friends of the Eddes Stowe's website, they have a video, we're really pretty cute on that one. Is that on right now? And there's, there's actually, the year, I think twenty-eighteen's got on there, and the two years before that are on there. We're just gonna show you this one, the three minute one. This is the first Flathead Tournament that was held, or Beat Back, they're doing that again this year on this paper. I didn't put times, I'm not sure, you know, we get in, the paddle trip about noon, they had the weigh-in, I think before we got back. So if you're driving to it, you might wanna get there about eleven. When I give you the exact time, I'll let you know when the weigh-in and all that'll be. But there's food, and music, entertainment, but take a look at this three minute video, and you'll see some of the fish they caught last year. I think we've got a weigh-in wrapped up by the curd, and we're gonna try to do what's out here. We've got hatters coming in, Bamberg, Chamber of Commerce paddle, it's headed away from Ziegag.
Getting these big fish out of there, that just lightweight, all flatfish to let's catch and eat, is a tremendous contribution. You took it on, you caught all these fishes, they won't be eating red breasts and brim anymore. I just think you should acknowledge the fact that you did so for the wonderful for your river. And then the Eddes Stowe, the one organization that's taken absolutely dedicated to one thing, the Eddes Stowe. If you don't do anything, but do this again next year, that's maybe the greatest thing you would do to the river, and I'm just so grateful and so thankful to all of you that participate in the organizations that go gather the money and manage the situation. So, again, on behalf of Friends of the Eddes Stowe, your river, thank you very much.
One of the reasons that we do these events is to try to build membership and awareness of our Friends of the Eddes Stowe. If y'all would like to join Friends of the Eddes Stowe, we'd love to have you. Friends of the Eddes Stowe, we're out there every day doing antipathy and trying to take care of our river, we'd like your help with that. And by doing Fred, you mean to say that you, you, we appreciate it. Thanks, Ken. The others are keep running today. For those of you who are a member of Fred, it's free. If you're not a member of Fred, it's ten dollars, and that's your membership for the next year. There are at least three events, I'll have generally music, and food, and everything in it, and you've already paid part, and you're now a member. Now, to be honest with you, if you keep helping by being a member of Fred, the next year, it'll be twenty-five, that's the record dues for Fred. And this is in Bamberg County, it was the best attended of their three major events last year, and I really wanna see that happen again. We had seventy-seven paddlers, so if you can come down, drive down, you can paddle, you can get in my boat if you want to paddle around out in front of it, if the weather's good. No guarantees on the weather, you know, that is, but you, you run it in the drizzle and rain and cold, so come out, it's in your county, best river, there's our entire border on one side, and we wanna use it, utilize it, we wanna make sure other people are aware of it, and I'd love to see some places from right here in Bamberg. Any questions?
Real quick, Joey, uh, excuse me, the South Carolina hit, so it, you didn't touch your cap, and I know some Bamberg people are going to come forward there.
It's been on there for a couple months, I probably didn't really mention it, but yeah, it's very good.
What's on there, what I have?
Any questions? Thank you, Jared. Next, we'll have an update of Bamberg County Treasury Department, treasurer, down in the country.
Good evening, everyone. Our friends and ladies. We have December twenty- nineteen and January of twenty-twenty reports. If you have your financial recap for December, we had a balance as of November twenty-ninth of deficit three hundred eighty-nine thousand nine hundred twelve dollars. The county portions for December, our income from our taxes, three million nine hundred seventy-five dollars, one hundred eighty-eight, three million nine hundred seventy-five, one hundred eighty-eight dollars, that's all. Less our tax transfer checks, two million six hundred seventy-seven thousand six hundred thirteen dollars. Less our DMV fees, department of motor vehicle fees, sixteen thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars. Less our solid waste fees, one hundred sixty-six thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars. The county portion of our taxes, one million one hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred sixty-eight dollars. Our receipts that came in during the month of December, two hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars. Less checks to others, three hundred nineteen thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars. And that was, we over, we had some checks to write out, so that left us with a deficit from the receipts of sixty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars. Our total income for the month of December, as far as county portion, what we have in the general plan, one million forty-five thousand seventy-seven dollars. Our expenses, accounts payable, four hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars. Our payroll, one hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars. Return checks, two hundred forty dollars and thirty-seven cents, which we always play. Refunds for our auditor, nine thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars. So our county expenses, six hundred eighty-three thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars. Take that away from our income, minus our credit balance from November, we ended up with a deficit twenty-eight thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars for the, as of December thirty-first. Even though our income was a million forty-five thousand seventy-seven dollars, and our expenses were six eighty-three, seven thirty-four, we had a plus difference of three hundred sixty-one thousand three hundred forty-two dollars, but we had to cover that negative balance in November, so that's why we were, ended up with a deficit for the end of December. You'll go to January, unless you have questions for that month. We started off December thirty-first with a deficit twenty-eight thousand five sixty-nine. And historically, January is always our biggest real estate month for taxes, because a lot of the mortgage companies pay it, everybody's trying to meet that January fifteenth deadline, and forty penalties go on. So we collected seven million six hundred twenty-eight thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars. Less our tax transfer checks, five million sixty-two thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars. And if you will notice, our this is a little different, starting with January. I moved the refunds up, and I took them away from our income, cause after all, it does affect the money that we have to spend. So I moved the refunds from Auburn, and we have refunds that I have to distribute due to mortgage company overpayment, or taxpayer changes with getting the homestead extension, so, and some people don't, they, they overpay, so that's why you have two different type refunds. So less the Department of Motor Vehicle Fees, twenty-nine thousand one hundred seventeen dollars. Solid Waste Fees, one hundred thirty thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars. Refunds per the auditor, sixty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars, and the refund from the treasurer, twenty-nine thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars. So county portion from our taxes... So county portion from our taxes...